The June 15th meeting of the Lebanon City Council. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I'd like you to remain standing after we're done with the pledge. Councilor Heistad.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all stay standing for just a moment, I'd like to ask everybody here to join me and other members of the council in a moment of silence to honor and remember the victims and the families of this tragic massacre in Orlando, Florida this past weekend. That's right. Thank you. You can all be seated. Item number two is the public forum announcement by the mayor. Any member of the public who desires to speak on an item may do so when that item is taken up by the council and will be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes. This is specific for items that are not already on tonight's agenda. So if you have an item you'd like to speak about that is not currently on tonight's agenda, please come forward to one of the microphones, state your name and your ward and what your item is for not more than three minutes. Do we have any takers? Okay. Moving forward, we don't have any resolutions, acceptance of the minutes. We have minutes from May 18th for work session, May 18th a regular session, and June 1st a regular session. Councilor Veelem.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented on June 15th, 2016, at the bench.
Do I have a second for that? Councilor McHale, any discussion, additions or deletions? So we're going to move these as a package, all in favor? Is it unanimous? Thank you. We have two appointments to do this evening. The first one is to the Heritage Commission and it is Lynda Cole. This is a reappointment as a regular member. I'm actually the councilor that spoke with Lynda Cole, so I'd like to bring her application or her application forward and put her into nomination for a reappointment on a regular seat with the Heritage Commission. She's a lifelong resident, has served on the commission previously, sees, has talked, has been able to articulate some of the challenges about preserving the historic nature of the, you know, the entire city, but specific designated areas of interest like the crafts and a project over the past, the past year. More involvement from the community and developing more education around the role of this group is particularly important moving forward. Do I have a second for this nomination? Councilor Welch, any questions or discussion about Lynda Cole's nomination for reappointment? All in favor? Are you sure you're in? Unanimous, thank you, Lynda Cole, you've been reappointed for another term. And Jennifer Mercer, zoning board of adjustment, reappointment as a regular member. She was interviewed by Councilor Welch.
I'd like to say that after a phone call with Jennifer on May 24th, I was really impressed by how bright, capable, and dedicated she is. She has lived in Lebanon for a number of years. She's experienced, this is a reappointment, she's dedicated and she's smart, and she's smart, and she sees this as an opportunity to give back and serve her community. She shared an anecdote with me in which she actually had come before the zoning board while she was on it and experienced that experience, shall we say, for herself, which just makes her that much better educated and knowledgeable. She has a remarkably complicated and very extensive career, but she is well aware of the responsibilities of being on the zoning board and makes every effort not to miss it. I cannot say anything better or higher in her reappointment request.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilor Welch. Do we have a second for nomination? Councilor Heistad, any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, Jennifer Mercer is reappointed to the zoning board as a regular member. Right. Okay. Item number seven is a public hearing item. This is to discuss ordinance, hold a public hearing on ordinance 2016-3 to amend the city code to include new chapter 49 city property use of, a public hearing to receive public input and take action on proposed ordinance, 2016-03 to amend the city code to include new chapter 49 city property use of to regulate parking and camping on city-owned property. So I just want to review the process by which we'll take tonight as we normally have for scheduled public hearing. The first part of this will be, is a presentation typically from the member of the city staff or the council that has brought this item forward. We'll have a brief statement from Chief Mello reviewing his memo and this item coming forward. Then it'll be open to a public hearing. I know there's a lot of people who want to speak tonight and we will give everybody the opportunity who wants to speak tonight to do so. Here's a few things to remember. The first thing is that we have two microphones on either side. It might work best if people line up rather than raise hands and get called on depending on how many people actually want to speak. When you come to the microphone, it's important, you need to say your name and you need to say your ward. It is part of our rules as a council that we have three minutes for each speaker. I understand that that can seem very brief and I know there are a lot of important things that people want to say, so what I would ask you to do is be as brief and concise, but I won't cut you off and not let you finish what you have to say. Just keep everybody else in mind that wants to talk tonight. There is nothing wrong with if you want to get up and just refer to something that another member of the public has brought forward, not to repeat everything that they've already said if you already agree with that, but do want to get up and put your name on the record. That's fine as well. Last but not least, the one thing that I would ask is we do as a council have a residence first policy, and I know there are people here from all over the Upper Valley as well as New Hampshire. Everybody that wants to speak will get an opportunity to speak, but I'd like to let the Lebanon residents have the opportunity to speak first as a courtesy. And we'll, that's the ground rules as I'd like to start off the public hearing part of this presentation. I know I do have a request for one person who would like to speak first, but I understand also that there are members of the legislative delegation that would like to speak together. So if it's okay, Sean Donner wants to speak first and then if our legislators would like to speak together, that would be great, and we'll take it from there. Get either side, name, ward, let's do our best to observe the three minutes, but we will, we'll be courteous and we won't cut you off. Sound good? The chief is starting now? Oh, sorry, the chief first. Sorry, Sean, I got ahead of myself. Chief Mello, I got ahead of myself. Please come up and join us, there's a microphone here. I have to apologize, I'm not used to running meetings in the Opera House. It's actually nice to see everybody here on such an important issue, but the lights are a little brighter than where you stood. Thank you, thank you, Chief Mello.
Good evening. So I'll give a brief presentation. I think that this has been a topic that has been talked about quite a bit in the last several weeks, so many of you are probably familiar with why we're here and what we have to offer tonight. Essentially, I was appointed here in December, there was a work project that was ongoing for some time in collaboration with the city manager's office and the police department to address a overall use of city property issue, not just dealing with one particular area in the city, we're dealing with areas of all city property that is maybe owned or land within the city. And this includes certain lots that we've been discussing more rarely than others, which is the Hannaford location. But this city ordinance is brought forward to regulate that type of activity on all city properties. And it is a city ordinance, so the violation of this would result in a hundred dollar fine as currently written. The issue that really precipitated this is obviously the issue down on Market Street with the Hannaford, the Hannaford grocery store and across the street where we have a number of people, the count varies, who have been camping there, some long-term, some on a shorter term. So that certainly is covered by this ordinance as well, but does apply to all other areas of the city-owned property.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief Mello. Okay, so now I'd like to open the public hearing and we'll start with questions and comments from the public. And Sean, I know that you requested to go first, so please, thank you. So those, are those the CATV ones or should they be projecting as we have here? What's Opera House? Do we have somebody from the?
Well, I'm glad people could hear. I want to thank the opportunity to speak tonight.
There you go.
As you know from the letter I sent, I think a week, week and a half ago to the Valley News, I stand in opposition to this ordinance. And my involvement with the homeless and disenfranchised people goes back to my twenties when I was living in Worcester, Massachusetts, and started a community center there, which is still operating 44 years later and I'm on the board of that nonprofit. I want to talk about a couple of themes. One is, who are the homeless? Because we all know the homeless, we can recognize them when we see them, but we may not understand what causes the homelessness. And then I want to talk about what the causes are, and I want to talk about what I believe is the best approach to take with this social problem. And I want to urge that you not turn it into a criminal police judicial problem. So let me talk first about the causes of homelessness. Nationally, there are 305, 3.5 million people homeless throughout the United States. And over 1 million are families with children. And on any given night, approximately 300,000 are homeless. Now, how do we know this? Well, we know it because for 25 years of work, this country's been doing a point-in-time survey of the homeless every January, and the information is reported back to the states and they disseminate it. So 3.5 million homeless people is a huge problem, but in Grafton County, according to the January 2016 point-in-time survey, there were 17 people who were unsheltered. There were dozens more that were living in shelters or were doubling up with friends. But only 17 people in January, God forbid they were living outside in January. So the good news is that in Lebanon and in Grafton County, we have a manageable problem. We're not dealing with 3.5 million people. We're dealing with, from what I understand from recent information, less than two dozen people living at Market Street currently. Let me turn to the causes of homelessness. Obviously, there's job loss, creating financial distress for the individual or the family. There's oftentimes this domestic violence and one of the members of the family leave. There are disputes such as divorce and separation. There's obviously substance abuse, and there's untreated mental illness. And many of these causes co-occur with each individual, so you could have mental illness and substance abuse. You could have domestic violence and divorce, and you could have job loss and financial destitution. Other causes of homelessness, of course, are lack of sufficient beds and shelters and lack of affordable housing where the rent would not exceed 30% of a person's monthly income. So who are the homeless? 30% self-report severe and persistent mental illness. 34% self-report a substance abuse problem. 11% are veterans. 25% are chronically homeless, which means they have more than one episode of being homeless. And over 50% are families with children. So this is a serious social problem that's best addressed by compassionate social workers and social welfare agencies and not the police and the courts. The proposed code 2016-3 states as its justification, the absence of trash containers, the absence of restroom facilities, the absence of oversight of the camping and parking on city-owned land, and it states that these issues create additional impact on the surrounding area and businesses. And no doubt, no doubt they do. However, all of these absences can be addressed by providing trash barrels, portable toilets, a spigot on a local hydrant or nearby hydrant that could provide drinking water, and police monitoring of the activity going on there. So there is no criminal activity. Now, the stated purpose of the proposed ordinance, 2016-3, is to protect public peace, preserve public law and order, promote safety and welfare. But from what I understand from reading the papers and talking to people, including Chief Mello, there is no evidence that there's a threat to public peace and welfare. And there's no need to be concerned about preserving public law and order because that's not at risk. So let's turn now to the, and I'll finish up, what is the best approach for Lebanon to take regarding the homeless in our midst? I think you ought to be focusing on developing a plan to deal with the homeless situation in our community, just like the city of Concord has done. They've published a master plan for homelessness, just as Salt Lake City has done, Denver has done, New York City and other cities have done. And in my opinion, the best approach to take is not to pass this ordinance, but to table it and take no action on it. Short-term, I would recommend that you permit camping in a designated area close to public transportation, stores, restaurants, supermarkets, et cetera. And I think the marketplace site is a very sensible site. I recommend that you provide trash barrels or a dumpster, a couple of portable toilets, monitoring by social services agencies and the police. And then in the interim, long-term, that you work on a comprehensive solution to the social problem that increases affordable housing in our community. Now, I've been criticized for saying that the proposed ordinance criminalizes the homeless, but I think that is an apt characterization of what this will do. The ordinance says that you can be fined $100 per violation. And if you're financially destitute and you're homeless, that could be very difficult to pay. So I thought, well, what happens if you don't pay that fine? And I went looking through the Lebanon municipal code online, and I came across this language. If you don't pay a fine, you could be charged with a misdemeanor. You can then be taken to court and you could be charged a $500 fine and/or given 90 days in jail, or both. And all that will do is create a financial spiral downward further for the people who are homeless. They may lose their car, they may lose their RV, it'll be towed and stored someplace and they'll have hundreds of more dollars of fees that they must face when they get out of jail. So suddenly, a financially destitute person could end up owning the city of Lebanon many hundreds of dollars, may end up in jail, and lose their personal property. So for all of these reasons, I ask you to take a compassionate approach to the homeless, table this motion, and don't proceed further with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. I understood that you represented Almy, and Rick?
All of you, together in very brief.
Okay.
I was going to start it, that's all.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excuse me. My name is George Sykes, Ward 2. As you heard, I'm a state representative for the city of Lebanon. I'll start off with saying that I'm also opposed to this ordinance. And it's clear to me that there are going to be other people who will speak more passionately maybe than I will about especially the human aspects of the questions that you are wrestling with. But I will just briefly remind you that in my work experience of more than 40 years in public service, one of those experiences was looking at homelessness that was truly intractable, namely 1.2 million people in another country after an earthquake, okay? The problem of homelessness in Grafton County and specifically in the city of Lebanon in my mind is not intractable and solutions can be found. And I would urge you to look for those solutions as opposed to moving forward with this ordinance. I've also learned in that 40, almost 40 years of public service that you can be as passionate and, in case you can't tell, I'm very upset, passionate about this as well, but you can be powerful speaker and you can offer personal arguments and you can offer arguments that make, that attach to people's hearts. Sometimes though, it's really important to have some facts and figures to go along with that. So my little piece tonight is I want to share some facts and some figures with you on how this proposed ordinance might affect Grafton County specifically and even the city of Lebanon as well. So it's just a tiny piece of the puzzle, but I want to share some things with you. So anytime a person can't pay a fine, not that they're not willing to, but they can't, okay? They can be sent to jail in Grafton County. Now, what happens is they get in jail, their fine is worked off at $50 a day, okay? But it costs the county, Grafton County, $137 per day to keep that person in jail. In the last 11 months, there have been 92 days in Grafton County for prisoners who are there because they have not been able to pay a fine. That turns out to $12,604, okay? Example, one example of one prisoner, they spent eight days in jail because they had a fine of $400, but it cost the county $1,096 for them to be there. Somehow this math is already, I hope you can see, is not working. In the last three years in Grafton County, or two years and 11 months, 26 persons have been sentenced over, have been sentenced over that time. 15 of those persons came from Lebanon District Court. And of those 15 persons, they served a total of 168 days. That cost the county was $22,848. So my final point that I would make to you is that this isn't just some ethereal numbers that I'm throwing out. Remember, although the Grafton County budget piece is very small to the taxpayers of the city, that those costs directly flow back to the taxpayers in their property bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Richard Abel. I live in Ward 1 and I also am a state representative representing Lebanon. And I as well oppose this ordinance. And I think there are a number of reasons why, but I'm going to focus on pretty much the same thing as my colleague George Sykes just did. I was also going to present you with the same, the same information about how much it costs us as Grafton County taxpayers for every day that we incarcerate someone. And it seems that it makes very little sense for us to spend Lebanon property taxpayers' money to incarcerate people who are being sent to jail simply because they can't pay a fine because they're homeless, when we could spend a fraction of that money and not have to send people to jail, give them a criminal record, impair their ability to get a job. And when they get, and when they get out of, out of the county jail, they have to go back to where they just were before, and they have nowhere else to go, and the cycle starts again. It just doesn't, it doesn't make financial sense when we could find other solutions that are much, much less, much less expensive. So I know the members of the city council have worked with you and know you're compassionate people, and I know you're also good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I think in this case, were we to go forward with this ordinance, we would not be stewarding the property tax owners' money, taxes in the way that would solve the problem or be the wisest. So I ask you to, to either table this or to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Susan Elme, Ward 1, also a state representative. Representative White is home in bed sick, or he would be here with us, so I wanted to talk to you more about the state law on this and the position that it puts Lebanon in. Our city has shouldered the lion's share of the low-income housing in our area. It hosts almost all the nonprofit service agencies on this side of the Connecticut in our region. But we can't turn the homeless away from Lebanon because there is no place to turn them away too. Our vacancy rate for residential rental is about 1 to 2% and has been for quite a few years. The average apartment rental rates are above $1,400 and rising all the time, $1,400. There are very few people among the homeless who can afford to pay for even the cheapest unsubsidized rates in Lebanon and the areas around. And unless you're a frail elder or a veteran, the subsidized housing waitlists are over a decade long. Even the frail elders and the veterans need to have an option until they can be placed. I got passed with great difficulty about 10 years ago, a bill that allowed the homeless who had a car to keep that car so that they could continue to live in them and look for a place to live in them. I would hate to see us pass an ordinance that tells them that they have to go do that out in Grafton. If we ban camping and parking here, they will end up on the streets, fields, and forests of other towns, or they will be hidden on the property of Lebanon citizens in their backwoods. The New York Supreme Court in Britain versus the town of Chester in 1991 ruled that it is unconstitutional in this state for a town to act to shift the housing burden to its neighbors, and that is what we would be doing. That goes both ways. Part of your attempt to mitigate this solution, this situation must continue, be to continue to tell the other towns, as our acting city manager's mother always did very well, that they, and not we, must provide the support that is required of New Hampshire towns by New Hampshire law for the indigent. I acknowledge that the state government is part of this problem, quite a large part of this problem, having cut social service budgets for decades. A small part of that has been reversed in response to the current drug crisis, but not much. And we four will continue to fight to restore the budgets. But in New Hampshire, the buck for those in need stops in the towns, not at the state. And we here in Lebanon have to find other solutions than this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
My name is Scott Anderson and I'm one of the homeless down by Hannaford's. And before I get to say what I have to say, could I have the audience, please, stand? Now, members of the council, can I, I ask you, can you pick out the homeless people in this crowd tonight? The only reason I'm asking is because we are so stereotyped and we're sick of that. The people that live down there, you all can be seated, sorry. The ones that live down here on the other side of Hannaford's, nobody down there panhandles. We stay to ourselves, we keep the place clean. We've even offered a mobile lodge down there. I ask you from the bottom of your hearts to please vote no or table this matter. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Carrie Beck and I am a Lebanon resident. And I am looking at the 22-page document from Concord, their plan to
The only reason I'm asking is because we are so stereotyped, and we're sick of that. The people that live down there, you all can be seated, sorry. The ones that live down here on the other side of Hannaford, nobody down there panhandles. We stay to ourself, we keep the place clean. We've even offered a mobile lodge down there. I ask you from the bottom of your hearts to please vote no or table this matter. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Beck, and I am a Lebanon resident. And I am looking at the twenty-two-page document from Concord, their plan to deal with the homeless. I am opposed to this ordinance. I have spent the last week researching online solutions to the homeless or proposals to deal with, to solve the homeless problem all over the world. I would be very happy to donate my services and supply you with all this research so that we can come up with a humane solution to the problem. Thank you.
My name's David Malmoney. I live on High Street, right over here. I voted the church over there. I voted for all these people that represent me in the state congress. I definitely agree with them that this law is no, no good, no good at all. Should everybody, they're human beings. And, but the one thing I gotta disagree with you on, I had to go in front of Judge Bamberger myself, our new judge. You're not gonna get rid of the homeless people by making it illegal for them to be here, because Judge Bamberger said it's unconstitutional to put a person in jail because they can't pay a fine, so they have to stay there and do community service, or then they go to jail. So either they gotta stay here to do the community service. It's ridiculous. They gotta be somewhere. Some of these guys are veterans, veterans, served in the United States military, better than half of these people that just sit around and never went anywhere, did anything, or even cared about the rest of humanity. They're just human beings. You're human beings. Karen, I know you, I talk, I go to your restaurants sometimes, you're nice people. I just, you're human beings, don't pass any humane law, okay? They gotta, instead, maybe pass a law that says you can camp anywhere on public property if you're homeless. I mean, what the hell, you gonna put them in your living room or in your backyard? They gotta be somewhere. You can't make them illegal to exist. That's all I got to say.
My name's Sean, and I want you people to understand that what I'm talking about is the big picture. And in 1995, all the insurance companies bought each other up until there was only six, given the idea of competition. But then it followed by every, every single one of them canceling everybody's house insurance out of town. I helped somebody in death over more, White River Champs in Vermont, and Anfield, New Hampshire, fix their places up so that I could get their insurance back so they wouldn't be followed by foreclosure. Now, this isn't the only place that this happened, it happened all over the country. And those people who couldn't get their houses fixed up got their insurance closed on, their homes were closed on because they didn't have house insurance. And this law that you're trying to pass is totally unconstitutional. And our war efforts in Syria, we've killed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people, and we've got eleven million homeless, and we've dropped five thousand bombs on Iraq and Syria. I mean, make them homeless. We don't need their shit. I mean, that's all.
If you could hold, I'm gonna go to our left. Your name and ward, please?
My name is Bill Claussen. I've lived in Ward Three for fifteen years. My experience in Lebanon has been that I've had great respect for the city, I thought it was an exceptionally fine city to live in. My opinion on this matter is simple. I think the council's proposal is disgraceful.
My name's Jean Kennett, and I'm not from Lebanon, but I work with the homeless.
Okay. I just, can I have you hold just for a second, Jean? I'm gonna let you continue to speak, but I just wanna know how many other residents of Lebanon would like to speak? Okay, so I would advise you to start moving your way towards the front. I am gonna let Jean finish speaking, but I'd like the Lebanon residents to go first. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Kennett, K-E-N-N-E-T-T. I'm a recovering addict and alcoholic with thirty years sobriety. I've been homeless myself. I worked for AT&amp;T and New England Telephone for twenty-three years. Hopelessness, being homeless is not a permanent condition. Just like my recovery from drug addiction and alcoholism, people recover from being homeless. A lot of these people, they're trying to help themselves. Some of them are camping out because they don't have enough money saved up to have a damage deposit or have money to get first month's rent. If they can camp out during the spring and the summer and the fall, possibly they can get themselves back into shelter in the fall. I run a ministry where I collect food, I collect sleeping bags, I collect tents. I go around through the homeless areas once or twice a day, and I deliver food to them. I do this out of my own money and donations. I am disabled myself. I have a heart toward the homeless because I've been there and I've done that. I ask you to do the same.
Hi, my name's Barry Winnick. I think I'm Ward Two, I'm over on Winter Street.
Hi, Baron.
How you doing? I know you guys are doing the absolute best you can do up there, and I know that the chief is as well. I can't speak for everyone, but I can speak for me. What I'd like to see you do is to table this measure for now and to work with coming up with ways where we can better serve solving the problem itself. Because if all we do is pass this, then we're not dealing with the real problem, and it will continue, and we're gonna be looking at more than two dozen people, folks. Thank you.
My name's Nicholas Warren. I'm from Ward Two, and I oppose this ordinance because it does nothing to improve the problem of homelessness in our community while simultaneously making life more difficult for those who are already homeless or will become homeless. Homelessness already has a direct financial cost to our community in addition to what Representative Sykes would say, following this ordinance with jail time. My fiancee is a nurse at DHMC. She knows firsthand how homelessness contributes to the cycle of grave physical health issues and contributes to homeless people frequently visiting the hospital. However, they are unable to pay their medical bills because they don't have a home or jobs. Therefore, local hospitals such as DHMC in Aspech Day write off their care as a loss, resulting in higher medical bills for the rest of the patients seen at these hospitals. So I would argue that improving the standard of living of these homeless people so that their medical issues are not as profound would be significantly cheaper than jail time or enforcing this new ordinance. A better solution is needed to address the underlying causes of people living on public lands. The solution may entail restricting use of public lands in some manner, but this ordinance is not the solution. We should not, we should be doing more than just kicking the can down the road to neighboring towns. And speaking of neighboring towns, the city of Lebanon does not need to work alone in solving the problem of homelessness. This is a regional issue. I'm a member of a local church which supports the homeless in our community through weekly food drives. In addition, there are several members of my congregation that work with local organizations such as the Upper Valley Haven and neighboring towns, who are interested in helping the city of Lebanon find a solution to improve the quality of life for those worse off. I'm positive that collaborating with community members who are experienced working with the homeless, we can find an ideal solution to the problem and not place a large burden on the residents of Lebanon. And I would be willing to help facilitate these connections if the city council desires. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicholas. Again, your name and your ward of residency in Lebanon.
Hi, my name is Marjorie Saadah, and I think I'm a resident of Ward Two. I'm the last guy's neighbor, so if he's in Ward Two, I am too.
Could you spell your name first?
S-A apostrophe A-D-A-H. It's an Arabic name. It's root is Said, which means happiness. Saadah means a special happiness. I am a specially happy homeowner in Lebanon after paying more than fifty percent of my income and rent for many years. I oppose this measure and ask that you do, and I hope that we instead would do three suggestions before we criminalize homelessness, which I believe should never be criminalized. One is make evidence of any city where criminalization of homelessness has ever worked. I could not find one. Two, try to apply for the emergency food and shelter program through FEMA, which is administered by United Ways in some cities, which provides federal funding for emergency food and shelter vouchers for homeless people. I've worked on that program in Los Angeles and would be happy to help with the application. And three, I can't remember because I didn't write it down, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Reverend Rebecca Girrell, G-I-R-R-E-L-L, and I am a resident of Ward Two and the pastor of the Lebanon United Methodist Church. I oppose this ordinance and would ask you to do the same because I do not believe that homelessness is a problem. I believe that the economic conditions that create and perpetuate the circumstance of homelessness are the real problem. I believe that the cost of health care and lack of access to it, the limitation of resources, the difficulty that people have accessing them, these are the problems before us as a community. And I believe that we can address these problems together, and I'm excited about that. In the past couple of weeks since this ordinance has been on the public view in the newspaper and discussed around town and around the Upper Valley, we have seen a really beautiful coalition of people coming together, and many of them are here tonight. We are people of faith from church groups, from interfaith groups like the United Valley Interfaith Project. We are young liberals and old liberals. We are humanists and humanitarians. We are representatives of social service agencies and nonprofits. We are individuals who use our own resources and our own time to help people in our community, and many, many more. We are willing to help. We are willing to address this problem, not the problem of homelessness, the problem of economic injustice in our community. I pledge my help and my support to this effort, and I know many more here tonight do the same. So I ask you to accept that help in favor and reject the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dana Mikulovic. I live in Ward One. I've also worked in the field of human services in Lebanon and the Upper Valley for the past twenty years. So someone earlier said they urge you not to kick the can down the road. I was going to say that with a follow-up to, in this instance, the can are real people. I urge you to be compassionate and to do the right thing, which we know is to either table for further study or reject this ordinance in full. Thank you.
Before we get started, I would, I would just ask that maybe we consider holding applause until the end, because it will just keep the flow of the different members of the public who want to speak so that everybody who wants the opportunity gets to in a timely manner. I appreciate the applause, but I think we could hold it to the end. If you like it and you still want to do it, go ahead. I would just wanted to make that suggestion. I will not gavel anybody for clapping, but thank you, go ahead.
My name is Stephen Silver, and I am the minister at First Congregational Church across Colburn Park. I am a resident of Ward Two, and I've had the privilege of living here in Lebanon for almost six and a half years. I want to thank our city council and our city manager for their hard work on behalf of our community. I'd also like to acknowledge the efforts of our law enforcement personnel and their work on behalf of public safety. With that in mind, though, I need to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance. When I came to the Upper Valley six years ago, one of the things that drew me and my family was the deep sense of community that we found here in Lebanon and through the region. We had a feeling that this was a place where people took care of their neighbors, helped one another. We were impressed by the wide economic diversity that we saw here, something that is increasingly rare in many parts of our country. This proposed ordinance, to me, strikes against the heart of our community and who we are. I believe we can do better than this. Reviving a policy that is essentially the 21st century equivalent of the 18th century poor laws that were used to drive the indigent from one community to another does not strike me as the best approach. We have deep reservoirs of goodwill in this community, we have a wealth of talent, we have many resources. I'd like to suggest that you table the ordinance and establish a task force drawing on members of the city council, committees in the city, turning to the faith community, social service agencies, law enforcement, perhaps college, and the hospital. I personally would be happy to serve in such an effort. Thank you.
My name is Robin Carpenter. I am, unlike many of your other speakers, I am a very new resident here. I've been here since January.
Welcome.
Thank you. And as a new resident, I do not have a strong position, pro or con, because frankly, until the news reports of this proposed ordinance, Valley News and all that, till I came across those, I frankly was unaware of the homeless population in the affected area. So I'm not here to say, please pass it, please don't pass it, please table it. What I am here to say is that I am troubled by the escalation of rhetoric, from this is the most obvious example of which is speaking of criminalization of homelessness. This is not, you know, when you get a speeding ticket, we don't say we're criminalizing speeding. And I do think that we need more information, at least than I have been able to find in news reports. There's a lot of talk tonight about the costs of enforcement, costs of incarceration. I don't hear anything about the costs of not passing the ordinance. What is the cost of, for instance, of police protection in this area? What is the cost of liability? I think it'd be very useful for the council to consider whether city insurance costs would be affected by having or not having a homeless community in this area or other, or other areas. So I guess, I don't know about the procedurally whether it's possible, but it would seem to me, one approach would be to revise perhaps the ordinance to make an enabling, rather than an executive ordinance, have an enabling ordinance so that the council could act if and when there are tangible problems being presented. Thanks.
Robin, can you tell us your street or ward of residence?
I'm on Bank Street. I think that's Ward One, is it?
Ward Three.
Three, thank you.
Ward Three, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Katz, and I live on Bank Street in Ward Three for the last seventeen years. And I'm a real estate investor in the city, and the property tax bills that I've received are large, expensive, and a little painful, but in light of the fact that the council makes the budget and pretty much determines what the taxes are gonna be, I really would like to explain my opposition to the ordinance in light of taxes, which is, as a not insubstantial taxpayer, I would rather you raise my taxes and have me be proud to be in a community than lower my taxes and make me feel ashamed that my community abuses the weak.
Hi, my name is Julie Putkin. I live in Ward Two. And... And I'm going to say that one of the things that really strikes me about this situation is that the homeless people have found a workable solution. There's not a big mystery about where they would go. There's not a big mystery about where they would stay. We're looking at people who have found a plot of land that's publicly owned, that's near the services and resources that they need. In many cases, they have their own housing in the form of RVs, and to me, that just sounds like hallelujah. And so I would really encourage all of us as a town to think about finding a way to make this solution workable in the long term, to make it workable for law enforcement so that the police are not enforcing laws that I would imagine are heartbreaking to enforce, that makes things workable for the homeless people themselves, that makes things workable for the merchants who have their businesses in the strip in West Lebanon, and that make it workable for us as a town to feel good about ourselves and our ability to welcome our whole population. I have just come back in the last month or so from working in a refugee camp in France that originated from one brave town saying, that's it. You know, there are migrants coming from all over the world to this area, and in other places, they're just chased away. They're living in completely unsanitary and unsafe conditions, and this town and this mayor just said, we won't have it. We're not that kind of town. And so they worked with other nonprofit organizations, they worked with some funds from their own town, they worked with a lot of volunteer efforts from people in that town and the towns around to build a safe, sanitary camp where people can get good food, where the women and children and adults have safety and have a sense of respite and refuge. And I firmly believe that we can do this, and in doing this, be an example of a town that has done what it takes to work with the resources that are already there and the goodwill of the community to do the right thing. I know we can do this. Thank you.
My name is Lucy Bergwall. I'm a resident of Ward Three, B-E-R-G-W-A-L-L. I have lived in Lebanon for almost my whole life, and I'm here tonight not because I am homeless or have ever been homeless or even know people who are homeless, but because I think that this ordinance would only have been proposed by people like me who have never experienced homelessness. And I think that this distance from homelessness allows us to create an idea about who might be homeless and to think that they can probably find a different place to live or have somehow caused that situation themselves rather than had economic forces and political forces and social forces that have led to their homelessness. And I was inspired to come tonight because I recently read a book that is called Evicted by Matthew Desmond, and it portrays the housing crisis that exists in the country, specifically in Milwaukee where he did his research, but that he correlates to the housing crisis across the country. And I think it's very easy for those of us who have always lived in a home to forget or not realize how huge small instances of economic insecurity or a job loss or loss of hours or an illness can influence your life. And if you're only paying 30% of your income to rent or mortgage, which is what the federal government considers to be a standard, what should be a standard maximum for the amount that you can pay, you can generally handle things like a loss of hours or a sickness. But if you're paying over 70%, which many people are, those expenses can push you over the brink and cause you to lose your home or fall behind on your rent. And I was amazed that someone here tonight said that the average rent in Lebanon is $1,400 because that's more than what a minimum wage job would even pay you in a month. So I think that we need to address our affordable housing crisis before we can push homeless people out of the place where they're living with nowhere to go. Thank you.
My name's Thomas Moore. As you've probably seen me all over the newspaper, but anyways, I'd like to see this proposal put on the table for the time being, as we cannot help being homeless. Actually, we're not homeless. I have a motorhome. It's paid for, but I'm not homeless. I just can't afford to put it anyplace. So actually, I am homeless. There's people down there who live in tents. Now, I proposed that the council would consider putting a porta potty area and a dumpster and take it out in the middle of September and put it back there in the springtime around Mother's Day. So if people have a place to stay that's homeless, now they can go into the shelters, but they have to only go in there overnight. They cannot stay there all day. I would want to thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Arianna Clark. I am not actually old enough to vote in this circumstance, but I would like a chance to speak on, actually, the children's behalf and opinion on this matter. It's unfair and unjust for us to take people's homes when they rightfully belong to the person that owns them. And when we do this, we aren't actually solving any problem, we're causing a new one. And when we do this, it doesn't show the spirit or liberty that I know that this state holds. I feel very badly for those who have to suffer this panic of this new law almost happening or not, but it's not right that we are doing this to anyone, whether they're living on the streets or in a house. It's not right, and I hope that you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Angie Leduc. I'm a Ward Three resident on Spencer Street, and I've lived in Lebanon my entire life. Growing up in Lebanon, I felt well protected, well taken care of, and as an adult who can now provide and give back to Lebanon, I want to do the same for all of my neighbors. So I urge you to vote no on this ordinance for all the reasons everybody has mentioned here tonight. Really why I'm here is because I want to be a part of the solution and not encourage creating a new problem. And I am a community coordinator, and I work with local communities in the Upper Valley. And Lebanon has a new and recent coalition called Lebanon Partners United for Safety and Health, of which I help to coordinate. The Lebanon Partners United for Safety and Health, or PUSH, currently focuses on substance misuse prevention and suicide prevention, but I know that they would be, and I'm not speaking out of turn here, more than happy to partner with folks on this issue. So I'd like to offer that, and just myself personally as a resident outside of my job, I would also love to work on this issue. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darla Bruno, Spencer Street, Ward Four. B-R-U-N-O. I told my friend I wasn't going to speak tonight, not so much for that plan. So you've heard some arguments here, moral, legal, spiritual, financial reasons why this ordinance is a bad idea, but I feel like we've thrown in the towel here before we've even tried to really solve the problem. I mean, where's our can-do spirit, folks? I mean, we've raised $2 million to complete the rail trail. We can't raise some bucks to build a couple of homeless shelters? I mean, we don't have that many people as of now that we have to house. I mean, if we don't have city property that we can build it on, then let's partner with the neighboring community that does. But certainly, we should be able to get together as a community or a region and raise this money and get it done, so let's just do it, right?
Is there anyone else from Lebanon that would like to speak? Okay, so I thought you were pointing to somebody who wanted to speak. So any residents or residents from our neighboring communities or other parts of the state or Upper Valley who'd like to speak, please come forward. Just state your name for the record and let us know the community that you're from. Thank you.
My name is Dwight Aspenwall. I live in Hanover with my wife and three children, and I frequent Lebanon for business and recreation, to play music with the Upper Valley Community Band and for other reasons as well. And I want to start out by thanking all of you council members for the very difficult tasks that you have in front of you. I know some of you, and I know what you're going through. And I also want to thank the law enforcement people similarly for the work that you're putting into this. I'm not going to go through the reasons for my opposition. I believe they've been laid out here well. I guess the one little thing that I would add is if these homeless people were our brothers or sisters or mothers or fathers, you know, would we think about the problem And then concretely, what I would like to offer is to fund the installation and maintenance of sanitation and trash facilities on site in the interim until we can get a real solution here. So thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Andrew Winter, and I'm executive director at Twin Pines Housing Trust. Twin Pines, as you know, is a owner, manager, and developer of affordable housing. Here in the Upper Valley, we have approximately 390 units, including 150 units here in the city. And I just, a lot has been said, and I don't need to repeat anything that has been said except to say, long wait lists, very long wait lists, and that is part of the challenge that we have before us in terms of coming up with a long-term and comprehensive solution. But in the short term, I did want to just go on record and say that Twin Pines and I know other nonprofits here in the Upper Valley would be happy to work with the city in coming up with a short-term solution here to try to address this and building on the other offers of assistance that have been made to the council and the city this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Hi, my name is Courtney Price. I'm a former Ward Three resident and currently a resident in Hanover. I think it's already been very eloquently explained, the opposition to this ordinance, and I would just like to add my voice in saying that I'm also opposed to this ordinance, and I think that better solutions can be found, and we've had a lot of really great ideas tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Sarah Kobolinski. I'm the executive director of the Upper Valley Haven. Appreciate the opportunity to be permitted to speak here this evening. I would like to add the commitment of the Haven, whose board has authorized me to offer this commitment to work together with you and with the other organizations in the community, Twin Pines, the Religious Circles, the PUSH Group, others, to work toward both the short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term solutions that will best serve all of us in these communities.
Hi, my name is Diana Munson. I live in Hanafur. I did live in Lebanon for about 11 years. I wanted to tell Tom Moore's story as he related it. He lives behind Hanafur's, and I think it puts face on homelessness and it illustrates how easily it is to fall into it. Tom is a 75-year-old veteran of the Army 82nd Airborne Division who is stationed in post-war Korea as a peacekeeper, and his roots are here in the Upper Valley. He grew up in what was then called Pompano City, Vermont, and went to high school on Seminari Hill in West Lebanon. He got his GED in the military. In 1977, he and his wife and daughters lived on Goose Pond Road in Hanover, but a fire burned down the house. In that fire, he lost his medical discharge papers and DD 214, so he has never drawn veterans' benefits for which he may be eligible. The Army has determined he has an 87% disability. He needs assistance applying for those benefits now. Tom worked as a mechanic at Jim Vance's VW Garage in Thetford, Vermont. He also worked as a certified iron welder on the Pleasant Lee Malseers Building in Ashra, New Hampshire. He became homeless for the first time at age 40 when he had a heart attack on that job. He was 140 feet up in the air on a four-inch beam, and a welding lead kept him from falling. His advanced age and two more heart attacks that he incurred at age 58 and 64 prevent him from working now. He is on his third defibrillator pacemaker, has had six stents, and his heart is too weak for open-heart surgery. Secure housing has been tenuous for Tom for many years due to bad health, low income, bad luck, and occasional flawed decision. Back in 2002, he bought a mobile home at a trailer park in Zephyr Hills, Florida for $3,500. He was in a relationship with a woman who had a drug-addicted daughter, and he threw the daughter out because he couldn't tolerate her using. That soured the relationship, and the park took the trailer when his partner didn't pay the lot rent. In 2011, Tom moved to Tennessee and lived in a double-wide trailer with the owner. After that, he bought the motorhome to go traveling, spending winters in the house in Jamesboro, Tennessee. He could relocate to Florida now, but he wants to live in the Upper Valley because of his connections to this area. Since March of this year, Tom calls his 1990 Tioga Arrow Motorhome with 43,000 miles on it parked behind Hanafur's in West Lebanon home. He moved back to the Upper Valley last fall from Tennessee and hoped to get a Section Eight voucher. When he couldn't, he spent the winter in the Walmart parking lot between the then-allowed hours of 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Heating his motorhome in the cold months is a real problem. Compared to many homeless people living behind Hanafur's, he is lucky. He has a shower and cook stove in his motorhome rather than living in a tent. Even so, he struggles with the cost of replacing the blower motor on his furnace so he can have heat and fixing his generator so he can run the electricity. He's resourceful and drives to get gallon jugs of water in Meredith, New Hampshire, and a woman in Hanover, New Hampshire lets him hitch up his hose to fill his water tank for the toilet. He gets rid of his sewage at a state park but can't afford to live at one or at a campground. In his lifetime, Tom's been homeless several times, on and off, for a total of three years. I'm almost done. For the past 10 years, Tom has gotten by solely on his Social Security check of $748 a month and $189 a month he receives in food stamps. He also has Medicare and Medicaid and pays a co-pay of $1.20 for his prescriptions. He would be able to pay $500 a month, utilities included, toward an apartment if one were available. Tom applied for affordable housing in West Lebanon at Romano Place, which has a waiting list of two to three years, and also in Bristol. He tried to get into the Haven, which was full, and he was waitlisted there. He needs to live close to DH and C because his doctors are there. Although he can't live with his sister in East Thetford, Vermont, she delivers important mail to him at the encampment. Staying with his 77-year-old brother in Buffalo, New York, who has had quadruple bypass surgery and cares for her wife with Alzheimer's, is not an option either. Like many other homeless individuals behind Hanafur's, he gets free community dinners Monday through Friday at the Listen Center. Tom purchased a $10 dump sticker and has taken it upon himself to regularly transport any trash the other homeless people bring to him to the West Lebanon dump so the encampment is clean. Tom says that if a portable toilet, a dumpster, and a fire hydrant with a spigot were provided behind Hanafur's, they would all chip in to pay for these conveniences, and perhaps the city could make up any difference. Thank you very much.
Corey Robinson from Wyverge, Georgia, Vermont. This is just not the homeless, but someone like a hiker coming through town. If your ordinance happens, what happens to campers that come through town? You didn't cover that one.
My name is Griffin Shumway. I live in Wilder, and I'm a member of the Vermont Worker Center. I've been thinking a lot about the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King this past week, specifically words that he wrote about a year before he was assassinated. True compassion is more than flinging a coin to a beggar. It is not haphazard or superficial. It is not haphazard or superficial. Comes to see that an edifice which produces beggars needs restructuring. A true revolution of values will look uneasily at the glaring contrast of poverty and wealth." I'm not here today because I'm homeless. I'm here today because I'm one paycheck away from being homeless. And I think that's true not just for myself, but for most of this, much of this room, and probably much of Lebanon. So while the homeless population might be small, the people that are at risk for being homeless is incredibly high. It is imperative not just to vote down this ordinance, but imperative to restructure that edifice. That is austerity, racism, prejudice, and greed. There's been a lot of talk about that this is not a solution, but we know what the solution is. The solution is providing quality public housing to those who need it. Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. My name is Devon Chafee, and I am the Executive Director of the ACLU of New Hampshire. Certainly, that would be D-E-V-O-N as in Nancy, C-H-A, double F as in Frank, double E as in Edward. Thank you. The ACLU of New Hampshire is an organization that has been working to advance civil liberties throughout the state for over 40 years, and we have over 3,000 members statewide, including many members within this community. I know that you've all received our letter that we sent in advance, so I'm not going to reiterate all of that. This evening, I do want to say that I did send it to all of the emails that were on the website. I've heard that some of you haven't, didn't actually receive the email. I know that emails with attachments can often get filtered off, so I just want you to know that was not intentional. And that letter lays out in great detail what our both legal and constitutional concerns are, as well as what our policy concerns are with the ordinance that's been proposed. I think that all of the policy concerns have been incredibly and very articulate, have been articulated by other members of the Lebanon community already here today. You just have an outstanding community here, incredibly compassionate community, and it always warms my heart to come up here, and it's always an honor to come and provide the ACLU's perspective. So what I do want to touch on very quickly is our constitutional and legal concerns. I do want to just state that we do see this proposed ordinance as being incredibly broad. Essentially, what it does is it prohibits the sleeping on any city property for more than two hours, and so we see this as being particularly sweeping. We also see it as being particularly similar to ordinances that have, in fact, been found unconstitutional by courts and other jurisdictions in our country. And again, that is laid out in the letter, so I'm not going to go through all the case law and the details of the cases here today. But I did just want to quickly quote from a U.S. Justice Department filing in one of these cases in 2015. So not only is this a case that's been, an issue that's being addressed in our courts, these types of ordinances, but the U.S. Justice Department thought it was important enough for them to weigh in on these cases in 2015. And this is what the Justice Department stated in its brief, arguing that an ordinance that was very similar to the one that's being considered here tonight was, in fact, a violation of the Eighth Amendment. And the Justice Department argued that it should be uncontroversial that punishing conduct that is universal and unavoidable consequence of being human violates the Eighth Amendment. Sleeping is a life-sustaining activity. In other words, it must occur at some time and some place. If a person literally has nowhere else to go, then enforcement of the anti-camping ordinance against that person criminalizes her for being homeless. And so I think that's a very good, short, succinct way of describing, you know, why the cases have come out against ordinances such as the one that's being considered here tonight. And we've already heard many other folks here testify about the lack of, and who know very much more than we do, about the lack of affordable housing in this area, as well as the lack of shelter space, all of which are relevant factors when considering whether the ordinance would indeed be upheld. And so I just want to, I also just want to state that, you know, this isn't about any sort of judgment on the intents of the law enforcement in this community. I want to say that even if Chief Mello and his force were to try to enforce this ordinance with the utmost compassion, it really would not be able to fix the fundamental flaw with this approach. And I just want to finally say, as, you know, listening to so many folks talk about their energy, about finding a positive solution, a different solution, and a different path to addressing the issue of homelessness in this community, that I did hear Concorde and their work to establish a plan to end homelessness as being held out as a potential model. And I just yesterday was speaking with the Executive Director of the Concorde Coalition to End Homelessness, Ellen Crowe, and she really felt very strongly that that process that they went through to establish that plan, bringing all together, all of the relevant stakeholders, to negotiate and become invested in one plan to move forward to address the issue of homelessness in Concorde, had a tremendous impact and really did allow them to move forward. Now, it didn't solve the issue entirely, but she felt very strongly that it made a huge difference in them being able to address the issue, and it just is very encouraging to hear the complete outpouring of people who would be willing to invest their time and experience and resources in this community in order to participate in an effort like that. So I would just respectfully urge the council to go in that direction instead of the direction that's been proposed in the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Elliot Berry. I'm the Director of Housing Justice at New Hampshire Legal Assistance, where I've practiced for 40 years. Berry, B-E-R-R-Y. In the course of my career, I have represented thousands of low-income tenants, probably hundreds, if not thousands, of homeless individuals, and it's come to be an issue that I'd say I'm fairly familiar with. And by the way, I should tell you, I have been here in Lebanon for about three hours. One of the interesting things to me, as I look back on my own career, is when I was young and a young kind of confident lawyer, one of the cases I did was Britain versus Chester that Representative Almi referred to. And in those days, I thought to myself, God, this is great fighting, you know, that I'm going to help everybody in whatever municipality have a great home that needs to, you know, where they can live with safety and dignity. And now we're all here tonight arguing for people that they ought to have a right to camp when they have nowhere else to go. I want to, the, I think the material that was just passed out is to reinforce what Devon just said. It is the brief filed by the U.S. Department of Justice in the case of Bell versus Boise, and I do believe that it raises extremely important issues about, even with small criminal fines, about punishing people for the unavoidable consequences of their status, in this case, the status of being homeless. And several courts have said, believe it or not, that violates the Eighth Amendment prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment. And again, the theory being, you're punishing them because simply they, for the consequences of the fact that they're homeless. I know that's not anybody's intent, but that is indeed the effect. But what if, what if you folks here in Lebanon pass the ordinance and actually successfully defend it? You all who have this famously progressive reputation for treating all people with dignity and compassion, if you do it, what are the rest of the people in municipalities all over Grafton and Sullivan County going to do? Because if they can do it in Lebanon, my goodness. And the next thing you know, I mean, I live in Manchester, and Lord knows, a lot of homeless folks end up there, but pretty soon, you know, it's, you know, send them to Vermont, send them to Massachusetts, or hopefully somewhere south where it's warm. I don't believe that's what you want to do. And listen to all the articulate testimony here tonight. It's clear to me that the citizens of, and the residents of Lebanon don't want to do that. I'm just going to close, and I hope you don't mind. I really do understand the concerns of the proponents. Some of them, business people, obviously, who are concerned about the effects of large numbers of homeless folks living, you know, camping out near their businesses. Some people have a probably good-faith concern about the health and safety of the people in the campgrounds. And others are just plain uncomfortable, seeing significant numbers of homeless people. But I can't help but be reminded of a quote from a Nobel-winning, prize-winning writer from France, who said that "The poor half the labor in the face of the majestic equality of the law, which prohibits rich people as well as poor people from sleeping under bridges." Whatever the intents behind the ordinance is, that's exactly what you would be passing, and I urge you not to do that.
Hi, my name is Reverend Ryan Clausen from theoffice.org, a World Peace Center-located. Hi, everybody. I never helped the homeless once in my entire life until I was 31 years old. I never gave homeless money. I never sheltered them, and I, they weren't on my mind. About a year ago, I went for a hike in California, and on that hike, I met a homeless man living in a cave who had been there for five years. I befriended him, and it, in more than eight months, three months, we were able to get him into an apartment, and everybody still had, and his life is immensely more enjoyable. I flew back here in December to open up a community office in Hanover, and I began working with the homeless directly. We have housed dozens of homeless people, and we learned by getting to know the homeless, which is what I think the solution is. The homeless, or not the homeless to me, the homeless are Doug, the man I met under a bridge in that river when it was 20 degrees below zero in February. We took Doug in, we talked to Doug, we fed Doug, we helped Doug. Doug now has a job and lives in an apartment. The homeless are people like Bethany, who were on her way to live under a bridge by the movie theater in Lebanon when I found her. And I hugged her, I talked to her, I brought her back to my office, and we helped her, and we found her housing in where she's now at. Homelessness should be over. We can all end it. This is an amazing community, and we should be proud to be in the community of so many people who show up to talk about this. We can celebrate this this year. There's no reason why we can't end this. It's not the problem of an organization or a group. It's a people problem. It's our problem. It's a humanity problem. And the way we can do this is by saying, we will not allow humans to suffer. Because if you go to Hannafurts right now, you will find people suffering, such as Mike, who's in a car, and he cannot walk, and he's living with his dog, and he's waiting to die because he has given up on us, but I will not give up on Mike, and neither should any of us. We should keep going until no one is in need of shelter, until no one needs a home where everyone has the basic needs of food, water, and shelter. And if we do this, if we come together as a community and do this this year, we end homelessness this year, it would be the most wonderful, peaceful gift we could share with the rest of the world. And so what I want to, it's an amazing time we're in right now. And I am honored because when I came home, I am not alone. There are people in this community who are housing, the homeless. One of them is a hero, I think of David Vince Lett, who has been housing homeless year after year after year after year after year. People like Susan White, wearing the green shirt, who's been doing the same. And now we're working together, and now we're not going to stop. We're going to keep going until we all shine out. Thank you so much, and I hope God bless you. Take care.
Hi, my name is Gustav J. Sudek. I'm originally from Connecticut. Gustav J. Sudek, G-U-S-T-A-V-J dot S-O-O-D-E-K. I'm originally from Connecticut. I grew up there most of my life, went to college in Vermont, dropped out. And I had a friend who was in the area, and she said to me, "Hanover and this, and the whole town is just a great community." And for a while, I was at the Haven. I was making it, and this was in December. I had a place to live, I had a place to sleep, but I didn't have a job. Eventually, I met this wonderful man that just came up and spoke with all of you, and through him and through so many others, I've found a path. But I came here for a reason. I came here for the community. I'm seeing a lack of community. I don't know where it's going. I don't know what's happening, but I came here for a reason. This ordinance and what it means and what it can do does not speak community. It speaks almost a fear of connecting. It's said that people put up barriers, and by social standards, homeless people are at a barrier from us, but that's, that's not okay. I can't vote here because I'm considered a Connecticut resident still, but I'm willing to change where I grew up, where I lived, and I learned, just be able to put a vote towards this and say no. That's all. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Susan Weiss, and please bear with me, I'm nervous. I'm President of A Sacred Place. We have 41 acres out in Kingah, New Hampshire, and our mission is to help the homeless with a reintegration center. If there is anybody here that is at risk because of this ordinance, I have applications you can fill out. We will take you, we will house you. We have sanitation, we have showers, we have a farm you can work at. We'll do it as a barter trade or whatever, however it works for you, all right? Everyone deserves a warm, safe, dry place to sleep, and by God, I will see that done. And I ask the council, please, put this vote in abeyance so we can process these. Thank you.
My name is Tessa Marinello, and I live in Enfield, New Hampshire, and everyone deserves kindness, even, because homeless people are people too, and they deserve the kindness and respect other people do. Yeah.
Hello, my name's Dave, and I, I live in Hanover. I'm not in a ward, although I think I may be put one eventually. I just, I was noticing some, my mom tries to teach me to notice things, so I just thought it was funny. I was reading this one page, and it says, "They spoke with a manager who was having some problem with a homeless population that live in a snow dump." I was saying, they live in a snow dump, and I had never thought of it as a snow dump, but that is a snow dump. That's where they take all the crap that they plow down the roads, they take all that snow so it can melt right there into the brook, just like they do at my house. This is, this is dirty snow that by state and federal standards is not supposed to be put where it runs into the water. These people are just trying to, to sit in the sun... These people are just trying to, to sit in the sunshine, but you're using it to melt your snow illegally in violation of law. That seems strange to me. In addition, I've called your town, because my town thinks it's okay to chop up their streets and put them where they wash into the road, wash onto the, into the water, where we, where homeless people live and swim and bathe, and we, we try to baptize them there. And I've tried to bring this to everybody's attention, every, every state office, every town office, everybody. They say I'm crazy. I've called the town manager, I called the mayor of Lebanon, and I said, "Do you dump your asphalt waste in our recycling program over here?" He ever said, "Yes, we do. Sometimes, when we have projects on that side of town, we, we put our waste into Hanovers." I said, "Well, well, it's illegal. You're not allowed to put asphalt waste in people's water under federal law. It's a violation of Clean Water Act. People have grandfathered in-stream rights. The waters of the United States do not belong to the government. They're held in public trust. The government is responsible to make sure that the laws are enforced to protect the people as they wander through nature." This is a sacred place. These are Cindy, these are Native American lands that we have taken, that we're now destroying. People who live in America being forced from the land, people wandering here. They know about that, that we haven't destroyed our forest yet, that we were once eighty-five percent pasture, and now we're eighty-five percent forest, that we have clean running streams. But some people don't realize those clean running streams will not stay clean if the people who are responsible don't act responsibly, don't follow the law, that all of us incorporated. Our government is supposed to be responsive to our people. I, for the last three or four months, have not been allowed to go into the town of Hanover's offices to look at materials that are required by law to be available to the public. I'm so proud that I'm near a community where you have come out and actually spoken and allowed me to speak, and I'm very proud that, that you listen as much as you do. There are other problems. The snow, there's other snow dumps. There's snow dumps at the Lebanon Hospital that they bring the snow up there so it can wash into McBrook.
Dave?
No, I, I just want to say one thing.
Okay, I know, I just wanted to try to bring you back to the ordinance.
Well, the thing is, normally water flows down the hill, but in Lebanon, they've been truckloads of snow up from the hot, the new hospital buildings down in Lebanon. They truck it up by truck and put it just now into McBrook's hood. It will melt into the water above our property. They bring the snow from downtown Hanover up and truck, do the same thing. These are homeless people living here. I, I, I hope you'll not only think about, yes, there's a problem with homeless, but think also about the responsibility of having a place, of keeping the, the, the law, which is to have an eighty-foot buffer from, from any kind of runoff and stuff that's going in there. There should be a one-something place for those people to be by the water to stay alive. I think that's where we should be.
So we're still in the public hearing part before we move to council deliberations. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Aaron Misowski, and I, I live in Hanover, but I've worked here like twenty-five years. I used to live in Lebanon. I was just wondering, I've seen an outpouring of goodwill, people who are interested in working towards some sort of a solution, and I've never actually heard that there were so many resources anywhere around. And I'm just wondering if it's possible if the, where it could, would be kind enough to extract from their, their notes to create a consolidated list to post on your website so that other people in the community would know the array of resources that have come already offered to work with the, with the council, and also to create a, a place, a sort of a consolidated listing of what might be available for people who are looking for those resources. So I'm sorry, it's not exactly, but I'm hoping you can do that for the community.
So Aaron, just for information, in the back of the room, there's some handouts, and although not all of the groups that spoke here tonight are on here, there are a consolidated listing of some of the available resources in terms of elderly adult services, sheltering resources, but there are more groups that spoke tonight than are on this list from an inclusive perspective.
So is it possible to include those groups and to post them so that the, the community knows what's available?
I'm sure that we could.
If you could, that would be wonderful.
We work with the city. Thank you.
My name is Rob Rint. I'm a resident of Merida Village of Glenfield. I'm also the president of the United Valley Union Faith Project. We are sixteen faith communities ranging from Claremont to Hanover, several in Lebanon, Enfield, across the border, wherever. And we're always focused on the issues of social justice, and for our, from our perspective, this is an issue of social justice. I had ten reasons why this was a bad ordinance. They've all been covered. I'm not going to cover them again, but I would like to leave you with a story. About eight years ago, I was talking to the mother of a child with disabilities, and I referred to that child as a disabled child. And she said, "Rod, she is a child first with a disability second." And this little lady, young lady, whose name I didn't catch, said essentially the same thing about people who are homeless. They are people first. They are homeless as a condition, hopefully a temporary condition. And I urge all of you and all of us to think of people who are homeless as people first. Thank you.
So without any other, without further public comment, we're going to close the public hearing and move into the section on council deliberation and action. Councilor Miller?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. When I first heard about this idea, which was just shortly before it first appeared in the Valley News, the first thing that popped into my head was Matthew twenty-five thirty-five. It starts off, "I was hungry and you fed me. I was thirsty and you gave me a drink." And I, I just began to mull over in my mind, what's the alternative here? Because I don't think the current situation is particularly tenable. There aren't sanitation facilities, there isn't potable water there, and so I thought, well, you know, maybe that site could be a seasonal camp with some structure. It could, I thought of campgrounds in Forest Service lands out west where there's a campground host, modest fees, modest facilities, but there's somebody to check you in. And I, I sort of pictured, you know, simple concrete block building with, with a restroom facility, maybe a little outdoor area with a picnic table under it, a sink where you could wash dishes next to the, to the restroom facility, just places I'd enjoy camping. And I thought, well, you know, in this situation, it, maybe we could raise money, get donations, contributions that could help fund something like that. It would need support from Human Services, it would need some, some supervision, some oversight. I, it even crossed my mind that since we're, it's right, that site is right on the road to the wastewater treatment plant that actually accepts for modest fee RV waste starting at seven in the morning, most mornings, that maybe even people on the highway might go off and, and stay at this spot occasionally, but then, you know, with some modest fees, that if people could afford them, then they could be asked to volunteer some time. So I thought, you know, is this idea crazy, or does it have any merit? So I chatted out with a couple of people I know who work with the homeless, Sarah Koplinsky who's here, and Alinda Neely who works in, with the VA with vets who are homeless. And I learned a couple of things. One is that we have a very robust effort to address these issues in this area. The Haven hosts the local Housing Continuum of Care Coalition. The VA over the past couple of years has really ramped up its efforts to try to eliminate homelessness among veterans. The White River VA team called Healthcare for Homeless Veterans has managed to, right now, has over two hundred veterans that were previously homeless placed into subsidized rent situations with support from their team. They don't require people to be sober or meet any other requirements to get into the subsidized housing program, simply that they be, be willing to see a social worker once a month. And right now, they have vouchers available for any homeless veterans who are eligible for VA healthcare. But I also sort of learned that, sort of the kind of idea I had, structured idea, you know, it might work for some people, might work for some folks who are there now. For other people, it might not work so well because they just don't want structure or any oversight or regulation. But I think it's, you know, what we've heard here tonight is a lot of ideas, maybe along those lines, that we could explore. I, I think it's important to note that this is really the first time the councils had a chance to discuss this. This was not a council initiative or proposal. This was a proposal that came from the city administration. It was apparently some work that was going on from the previous, under the previous chief to address a problem that, I think there's some, there's some weird problems that there may be a role for some regulation for the public lands. But I think, I think, I suspect that, well, I don't know, I can't speak for anyone else, but I think that I'm certainly willing to give the chance for, for us to work on alternative solutions, and if, if no motion comes forward, then we wouldn't need to actually act on postponing or table anything. If a motion does come forward, then once every, all the councils had a chance to deliberate and have their say, I, I, you know, would like the opportunity to offer a motion to postpone or to table the issue if, if we get a motion. But I, you know, I think it's important to realize that we, we really haven't discussed this among ourselves, particularly it was, you know, I did want to address a problem, and I'm really glad that so many people have gotten out and come out and got engaged and taken the initiative to learn about this and expressed their, their feelings and concerns. So thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Councilor McFarren?
Thanks. I'd just echo what Cliff said, thanking people for coming out and all my time on the council and on the playing board. I've never seen this large a crowd for anything positive, negative, or otherwise. So I do appreciate you coming out and expressing your opinions. Couple of things. I was particularly taken by Mr. Moore's story. As a veteran myself, it resonated with me strongly. I would like to offer that there is a group in Hanover, Project Vet Care, that really, among other things, specializes in helping veterans who have lost their paperwork in qualifying for military benefits, and I would strongly suggest either he go with them directly or someone assist him in going to Project Vet Care. They will give him the assistance he needs to get his military benefits that he so richly deserves. So that's the helpful that I can offer. I'd also like to thank, in particular, Mr. Aspenwall and Ms. Weiss for offering very generous and pragmatic solutions to what has been a very long-term problem. It's encouraging to see people step forward and actually put their resources and their finances to these, to these issues. So I think there are a lot of pragmatic questions here that we have to, we have to think about. I do sit on Andrew's board of Twin Pines Housing Trust, so I'm well aware that there's an extreme shortage of affordable housing, not just in Lebanon, but in the Upper Valley in general. Andrew mentioned that we have a hundred and fifty, we, Twin Pines have a hundred and fifty units here in Lebanon in addition to what Lebanon Housing Authority has and a couple of other organizations have. So I think in total, we probably have somewhere approaching three hundred affordable housing units in Lebanon. That having been said, and that being a, a large number for a town of this relatively small size, a population of about thirteen thousand, the waiting lists are extremely long, and it's clearly not enough if we have people living outside as we do down by Hanafords. I think that we will not solve that problem for many, many years despite trying as mightily as all of our organizations do. It takes a tremendously long period of time and a tremendous amount of resources to plan, fund, and construct affordable housing. And so I don't think we're going to solve this problem this year, next year, or possibly within the next decade and maybe longer. So an outdoor situation like this, while it certainly is not ideal, may provide some sort of a temporary solution that would at least allow us to more quickly provide something that is affordable for people who don't have the resources for anything else. I think we have to look at a couple of things. Number one, this is a situation that we have all turned, I don't want to say blind eye, but we've all sort of looked the other way on for years. We've had people living down by the river in West Lebanon for years, we've had people living down by the tracks in Hartford for years, we currently have people living on the island in the middle of the Connecticut River, below the dam. That's been going on for a long time. I think Hanafords is just the most recent manifestation of this, and it's somewhat more visible than, than the other locations. So we now, we all own it. So, you know, certainly the city, if it continues to turn a blind eye to it, has some liability issues that we did not have previously because it's now out there. We have at least tacitly sanctioned it if we don't do something about it. While I think a porta potty, a porta potty is trash containers, and a spigot on a hydrant are seemingly very practical short-term solutions, I don't think they're the panacees of the problem by a long shot. If this is the path we're going to go down, and I'm not suggesting we should or we shouldn't at this point, but if this is the path we're going to pursue as an alternative method to help house people who can't afford rent in other places, I think we have to treat this as, for the lack of a better term, almost a haven without walls. So this needs to have, this would need to have proper sanitary facilities, proper cooking facilities, proper security, some way of, of metering the number of folks that are using it. We just can't open it to everybody any more than the Haven can say, you know, "We have twenty beds, but we'll take a hundred and twenty people tonight. There's just not space," and it just doesn't work. It needs all the other human services that you would get at a place like the Haven. It needs everything that the Haven needs in, in an outdoor facility. And I think that if we're going to go down this road, that is the commitment that we have to make, and I certainly could not support any, any commitment less than that. So I think we need to look at a bunch of things. We need to look at whether this is, if we want to do this, number one. We have to look as to whether this is the proper site for this. We need to look at what the capacity could be. We need to look at what folks do when it gets cold because clearly we're not going to operate a campground year-round. We need to figure out who's going to operate this. The city is very unlikely, it's very unlikely that the city is going to be in a position to operate this sort of facility. It would have to be a, a third party, and I hear folks stepping forward at least tentatively to, to do that tonight. I think we have to look at the business owners in that area. You know, they're taxpayers too, they have concerns, some of them are legitimate. We have to look at all sides of this. So in short, I would support tabling this tonight. I'm gratified that we may be on the path to a, a solution, but I think we need to take it the whole way. Thank you.
Councilor Bronner next.
Councilor McNamara sums it up pretty well, but I think we all need to understand that Lebanon is already extremely generous to social services. We give over two hundred thousand dollars to a dozen agencies that all work within the community. We also fund our own human services department, over two hundred thousand dollars there, and we've been doing that for years, every year. The issue for me is there has to be some definition of where this is going to take place. Unless there's some sort of definition or ordinance that defines which land we're going to accept people staying on, it opens up the part, people could be putting tents up out here and using the bathrooms in City Hall, which is something we do not want, or at least I don't want. The other thing for me is every agency that works with homeless or works with giving benefits to people that are in distress requires that they identify themselves and that they register. I've heard from a couple of people that actually live down there, but other than that, we have no idea who these people are that are living on city property. We don't know whether they carry guns, we don't know whether they're sex offenders, we don't have a clue. And I think- And I think part of any place that we make available for people to stay should require that they register and identify themselves. I came here tonight ready to vote in favor of this because I think that it puts the city of Lebanon in a position of great risk and it concerns me that we just open our doors wide up without any sort of regulation at all. After hearing everybody and listening to what people have said, I may be leaning the other direction. As a community, we bear responsibility to help people that need help. But I don't really feel that it's my responsibility to reach into the city of Lebanon's taxpayers' pockets and pay for all of it. This is a regional problem. This is not just Lebanon's problem. This is Hanover's problem. This is Hartford's problem. This is Norwich's problem. And it needs to be solved together. And Lebanon cannot afford to pay the whole thing. And so until, I may be willing to table it, but until there's a solution that includes the entire region, I'm not going to be able to support it.
Thank you. Councilor Heston?
I think, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and it's wonderful to hear the outpouring, pouring of support. And the humanness that has been brought to light tonight should be remembered by all of us. Boston had a little problem a little while ago and they came up with Boston Pride. I think we need to be thinking about Lebanon Pride. The idea that we can be proud of the place that we are and what we are capable of providing and serving. We do a lot as it is now the recipient of a lot of the problems in the Upper Valley. We all know it's a regional problem and it was very nice of Dwight Aspenwall from Hanover to offer to put some money out and actually pay for that. In fact, in the letter to him, he offered to do it for more than one year if it was needed. It's a regional problem. The problem has existed in Lebanon for a long time and we are now, 80 years later, further behind than we were back in the 30s. When I grew up here, there was a trenching camp and anybody who was trenching coming through town had a place to sleep. And Lebanon provided that, was up behind Al Spakley Hospital on the Hubbard Turnpike. This winter, a gentleman commented, he says, "Well, I grew up in that trenching camp for a while." And he listed three other families that were out there that all graduating, had graduating members of their class from high school. Families came when they couldn't get along anywhere else. He said, "We came down from Newbury because my father got a job in the mill. People came because there was, there were jobs here and it was a chance to get ahead, but they needed a chance to get their feet on the ground first." Lebanon has a lot of jobs and hopefully we're going to have more jobs and we'll be able to provide better for those people that want work and are capable of working. But I think in the short haul, we need to elicit support of every town around here to say, how many agencies can we pull together and what kind of program can we do to be effective to help these people come up, not to keep them down? And I think that each one of us could be homeless. And I say that from experience. If you were to leave here tonight and on your way home have an attack that puts you in a position of having PTSD, you would find that perhaps you were not capable of living in your house anymore because that happens. When your hometown, your home area becomes a threatening area, you can't live there. And any one of us could have that happen and any one of us could end up homeless. So, as we go to bed tonight, kind of think about it. So, where would I be tonight if I couldn't be here? Because that's what those people are facing. So I think we need to look at what we as a town can do to organize and I think we can be the organizer. We should be able to reach out. There were people that were willing tonight to step up to the plate and I think we need to accept that offer of energy and say, how do we organize now to be productive? So I want to thank all of you that have done that. Thank you.
Councilor Hill?
Thank you. In 12 years on the city council, I have noticed that usually our rooms are empty. Council chambers is usually empty except for the people who are actually required to be there, who are on staff or who are being paid by someone else to be there. When the room is full, it's usually because of some self-interest. So maybe your neighborhood is being threatened with the police department being located on Poverty Lane. Or maybe it's the airport which is causing a nuisance for you and your neighborhood. And so it's frequently, or it could be School Street and land that was being taken from people's front yards to accommodate sidewalks or pedestrian facilities. I think it's really inspiring that the largest turnout that I think we've had for a council meeting, at least one of the top three over the last 12 years, is not for self-interest, but it's in fact, I think most of the people in this room are not homeless, but it's actually out of the deep interest and the deep care and concern for our friends and neighbors and people who are not, people that, who are in a position that we might not, as someone had said, Lucy had said earlier, that we might not have ever found ourselves in. I think that's really inspiring and I think it says a lot about the kind of community that we in fact do have in Lebanon. I did want to remind folks that we were brought, the city council was brought a similar ordinance, or at least a related ordinance, to prohibit panhandling. You may recall that. It was not particularly well-received by the city council. So, I hope that some of you may have actually had some faith in the city council that we would not have necessarily received this ordinance very well either. So I think that you can have some faith in the leaders of your city, that we also share the compassion that clearly so many of you share as well. So, I would also like to explore, however, what might be called the other side. Because we've heard certainly very articulate and eloquent concerns raised in support of homelessness and in support of opposing this ordinance. But I would just like to, I guess, entertain a little exercise, an intellectual exercise, where perhaps you could imagine why this would be a good idea or why it might be necessary. As a city council, we are responsible for everyone. We're not just responsible for some people. And everyone includes also businesses. It's not just people who are on the brink of falling apart. Businesses also, business owners can also be one paycheck or one bad day of sales away from ruin, quite honestly. We all live together in this kind of ecosystem. We are all part of the same economy. We are part of the same society. And so we have to take into consideration as a city council, not just what may be best for the homeless, or not just what may be best for West Lebanon, or not just what's best for the folks who live on Mascoma Lake, or people who are in their 60s, or people who have children. We have to consider everyone. And sometimes there are competing interests that pit one against the other and these are really difficult times. Now I will remind you that in fact, a residential purpose is not permitted on 12A. This area that we are talking about, where people are living, it is not zoned for residential use. We have not agreed as a city that this is a place where we think it's appropriate for people to be living. We have said this is a place where it's appropriate for commercial activity to be taking place. Now I certainly am compassionate and I'm open to the idea that if it's reasonable, if this is the right place for some, some other endeavor to be considered, then okay, I will go along with that. But I just would remind you that we have a master plan and we have zoning ordinance that are, ordinances that are based on the master plan. And the master plan is the collective vision of our community about where we think housing belongs, where we think commercial activity belongs, where we think, how we think we can all best live and work together. And so, as a city council, we have to take all of these things into consideration. Now, I would absolutely concur with my colleagues that we should build on the momentum of people who have come forward tonight and offered their help. I think that that is perhaps the best thing that has come of all of this is to, as Dr. Soski was talking about, just show the tremendous array of services and resources that are available out there. And so I hope that tonight we can move forward with the idea of creating a task force to explore the question of homelessness, to explore the longer-term question of affordable housing, and to work and bring together all of the groups that, and all the stakeholders in this who have offered their assistance and to come back to the council with a comprehensive policy to address homelessness, to address in a short-term way and also hopefully a long-term way. But I hope that maybe you can understand why this is not a black and white issue. It certainly is more complex than just criminalizing homelessness or cold-hearted officials who are trying to increase police power, that there are a lot of factors to be taken into consideration. And so I thank you all for displaying the compassion that you have and I hope that together we truly can move forward and I am feeling inspired that, that we can make a difference on this issue.
Councilor Welsh?
Oh, as the newest, but by no means the youngest member of this council, some of you may have read that I petitioned to be a council member for my Ward III on the subject of affordable housing and bringing more business to town. I won't trouble you with any further comments because I feel very strongly that all of you and all of us have come to a consensus about what needs to be done next. I would urge you however, when you get back to where you live, for good or ill, that you consider going forward from tonight with us. We cannot do this by ourselves. Most of us are not trained to be social workers, pastors, or even lawyers, and we need the help of as many people as possible. You have touched my heart very deeply by being here and that's the most important thing we can say. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I don't really want to spend time rehashing or restating what's been said from, from members of the audience as well as my fellow counselors. I, I will say going into this, I'd had the opportunity to speak on the phone or email and some people, if I haven't emailed you back yet, I'm sorry, my perspective that I had concerns about moving forward with the ordinance in the way that it had been prepared. I mean, this is about the use of city property and it evolved, you know, the question, the tipping point in this particular conversation came from this section of 12A and brought this, an issue of homelessness that we've all known about, and some, some more so than others, to really the forefront. So there's, you know, there's two pieces. I, again, wasn't, I'm not in favor of the ordinance as written, but I do see and understand what the problem is. I do think that we have to talk about how to move forward. I've, I've also said that the idea of legal and public encampments, you know, is something that worries me and it's not that I, I don't want to do it or I'm dead, you know, I'm clear cut against it. I just want to make sure that we explore some of the complexities that have, we haven't even been able to explore, the complexities that we need to, to make sure that this is done, if we're going to do this, this is done the right way. And it also is done, as many others have said and have been offered time and time again in the audience tonight, in partnership with other people. This is, we're, you know, we're not in the business of, of property management and of doing something like this before and there is risk that's associated with it. And part of being a city counselor is being a good steward. At the same time, I, I have great compassion and for, I love my city, I love the people in my city and I want to make this work in a way that we can all put our heads on a pillow wherever it may be at night and know that we've done the right thing. So, with that being said and echoing the thanks that other councils have extended to all of you that have come tonight, I want to try to talk about some of the things that we're going to do next because we're not going to be able to answer a number of the questions that have come up tonight. There, there are some answers that have been brought forward, but there are questions that continue and need to be explored. And I'm not looking to postpone or drag this out in a manner that, that may in any way look obstructionary or bureaucratic. I just want to set a pathway so we know where we're going to go moving forward. And part of, you know, the, the great thing about getting to chair a meeting is that you get to sit next to the city manager, the intercity manager, have side conversations to try to figure out what you're going to do next. And I just want to share, I think somebody brought this up earlier, but it's, it's interesting and it's fitting and it's somewhat karma that Paula Mavel would be the intercity manager at a time when we're talking about an issue that her mother, who took care of social services, human services in our city for years, was so near and dear and important to her. So, we have, we have the right person sitting to my, not to my right, but to my left and her, I want to kind of shift this a little bit to Paula to talk about some of the things that we can do for, how we can move forward. Does that sound agreeable to everybody at this point? Okay. Perfect. Sorry. It's okay. I should have waited.
So, sorry. Mentioned my mom and I do get a little emotional. My mother was Donna Hutchins and she was the human services director here in the city for 25, 30 years. To some of you in the community that know her or knew her, she was much more than that. So, first of all, the, the most important thing that I want you to hear is that the intent of the city was never to criminalize homelessness and it certainly wasn't to displace the, the most needy people in our community. We were going out and reaching out with as much as we could at the time to understand the people that are currently living at the site. Our humans, current human services director Lynn Goodwin collaborates daily with our homeless outreach coordinator Diane Munson at Tri-County CAP. And it's my understanding that Diane is intimately familiar with, with some of the residents that are currently living at the site. So, the resources that we have available to us, we were trying to provide the information to the residents there to get them services so that we weren't just simply displacing them. We weren't not considering their needs. We weren't, you know, we were doing our best with what we had because part of the, you know, and what some of the councils have expressed here is that, you know, part of our responsibility is to, to manage what happens with everybody in the city. And this is a city-owned piece of property and yes, it is public land, but without regulation, we don't have oversight of our property. It runs much differently than a, a private entity that owns their own property. We have to regulate the power and the use of our property through ordinances. And honestly, I'm touched to, to the very deepest part of me to know that there is this much in the community. You know, I've dealt with, over my years, and I've, I've been here in the city for 30 years in various capacities, and part of what I did was human services with my mother. And I dealt with, excuse And I dealt with, excuse me, people that work in many different social service agencies, from Y's to Listen to Tri-County CAP. My mom was on the board of Ten Bricks when they were trying to establish a homeless shelter here in the city. And it kind of just went defunct. And so, I'm more than willing and would love to know more about what is available and how much collaboration we can come to find a solution. And we do need a short-term solution. We need a short-term solution to help what's happening right now. But we need a longer-term solution to make sure that we don't experience this in the future. So, all of you that are here, that represent these agencies or just on a personal level that I am not aware of, I want you to reach out. I want you to contact me. I've made a list during the note-taking here. But I'm on the website. My email is on the website. I want to hear from you. Lynn Goodwin is the Human Services Director. Could you just stand up for a second, Lynn? Put a face to the name. And she's also on the website. So, we're more than willing to do what is needed. And, you know, at the direction of the city council, the policymakers and the people here that are making the decisions based here, as soon as I get the direction, then this is where we're gonna go. So, I guess I'll end it there.
Okay. Councilor McInerney?
So, we've got a couple of options here tonight. And Cliff is much better at the procedural stuff than I am. But I think what I'm taking from this is that we can take no action and we can direct the interim city manager to work with the community as the community comes to the city manager and the city manager goes up to the community to try to come up with some suggestions. We can take up this ordinance either to say yea or nay or to table it. But we have to take it up to table it. And I want everybody to understand that if we take it up, it can be to table it, not to vote yea or nay. My thought would be that the easiest thing may be to simply take no action at this point, but direct the city interim city manager accordingly. And we have all these people here who are willing to contact her and give this a little bit of time and see where we end up.
So, Councilor Hill and Highstead, but I just, I'm gonna take deliberating and speak quickly and then turn to my right. So, based on what I've heard from the interim Aunt Jemayville and Councilor McInerney, I think that, you know, one of the things that we need to consider, and this is partnering with the manager's office with the police chief who's, you know, been or has interest in working on this issue. And when I think about the City of Concord and what they've done, the then-police chief was very active in this discussion. I think that one of the possibilities is that a structured community conversation, once we've been able to as expediently as possible investigate some of the, you know, the risk and the insurance-related issues and some of the ways that we can partner. And I think we actually have to get all those people in the same room before, as a council, we can formally, if we need to put a policy together, do that. So, I wanted to, just from a process perspective, push that out there because I think, access to, as always, and the city officials have always been very accessible, but we might need to take this to the next level of a structured conversation. But before we get to that, the list of questions that have been generated, I think are gonna need to be answered. So, we can bring those, the city can bring those, councilors that want to participate, as well as the organizations that have stood up tonight and said, organizations and individuals that I have something to do and I want to help. So, I'm gonna turn to Councilor Hill and Councilor Highstead.
I'm gonna alert you.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
So, we have recently reorganized our committees and streamlined some of them. And what we've adopted is a task force approach. I think I would be more comfortable this evening. I would not like to particularly take up the ordinance, even if it were to table it. But I would like to take some action. I would like for the council to express affirmatively that we would like for the city manager, the acting city manager, or interim, rather, city manager to work together with the police chief and the other members of the community with a sort of, with a deliverable, to bring some sort of a deliverable to the council with a certain timeframe articulated. I would feel, I think it would give me more comfort. And I think it would give more comfort to the members of the community who are clearly concerned with this issue. So, I would like to see, I would like to see some definition given to this. And I'd like to see the council affirmatively express the direction that we would like for the management to go in. And I would like to see that include some sort of a coalition or a task force being created that has some sort of timing associated with it.
Councilor McInerney?
So, one question I would have, and I absolutely agree with everything that Councilor Hill is saying, but because we did not advertise an item, we did not take up an item to establish a task force, can we establish a task force at this meeting?
Well, there, so there's a process. There's a form that needs to be filled out in order to establish a task force that I don't think, my understanding is it needs, a councilor could complete it and submit it to the city manager's office as well as the mayor for a decision on whether a task force could be established. So, it gets taken up at the next meeting. But the first, just like an agenda request, things get on the agenda either because the city manager's office or department wants to put them on the agenda or one of us does because we have an interest or a member of the public comes to us and asks us. The task, so the task force form would need, you know, simply be completed, submitted to the manager's office with the manager and the mayor who set the agenda. And then it would end up on an agenda, either the next one or the one after, for the formal adoption of it. It doesn't stop any of the conversations that need to happen. But we need the councilor who's willing to, one or more councilors who are willing to spearhead that.
I'd be happy to work with anyone else who would be interested in putting a name on it.
Okay. So, I'm gonna leave it to Councilor Hill to coordinate with other councilors to get that done.
And maybe we could just express a consensus that the manager proceed to pull together an ad hoc group to begin to talk about next steps, sort of lay the groundwork for continuing to engage the community. And I, some people have volunteered some resources. I do think we need to take some actions in the short term to improve the, you know, sanitary situation there.
So, I think that, so a task force sees to establish. Prior to that being established, it doesn't prohibit the manager's office from working with any of the groups that have come forward in the police department to take any action. I'm not so sure what we can do without the answers to some of the questions around insurance. I mean, I think if we can have this task force agenda item two weeks from now and we can have all of our questions as councilors submitted, ones that either, so the ones that have come up tonight are on the record. But if there's any others that need to, as well as I trust the manager's office will coordinate with other city department heads and the not-for-profit organizations that we either already work with or have come up tonight to put a list together of the questions that need to be answered as well as some of the immediate items. There's the things that need to be done right away and there's the more long-range. And that that's what we should be prepared to deal with when we come back on the 6th. Does that sound, does that give a little more definition to how we're gonna proceed? Okay. Councilor Barona?
I would just like to say that I would feel much more comfortable about the task force if one of their jobs is to identify every person living on public land. That they have an identity so that we know that they're not escaped convicts.
I'll look to Councilor Hill. She's writing now. So, Councilor Hill?
We let you talk. Let us talk.
This is, respectfully, council time for deliberation. Councilor Highstead, did you have something?
Dwight Aspinall offered tonight, and we have his writing also, that he's offered it first year and negotiated second year. Is there a problem with our taking action on that?
I think we...
Get something started so that something happens out of tonight?
I think that, you know, Dwight can work at the manager's office to try to hammer on some of the particulars, but we need to answer, have the manager's office answer the risk and insurance-related questions, like how does this partnership go? So, I don't think we, this is a very generous offer and I'm not, I don't think there's a way to formally move forward with it tonight without the manager's office coordinating the answers to those questions and working with Dwight.
I guess I would appreciate if the manager's office could see what difficulties would be encumbered around that in terms of the nitty-gritty.
And the conversation can start. It doesn't have to stop here. But that piece has to be answered as it goes forward. Anything else on this item? Okay. So, thank you, everybody. We're gonna be moving on with our agenda this evening. Old business. So, I don't see any old business on the agenda. I don't see any new business on the agenda. And so, for reports, there's the city manager. I know that I, there's been a lot of work in the last few weeks. So, anything else, do you?
Honestly, I'm like, I do do notes for the draft, okay?
Okay, we're good. I know we have to file reports on council representatives or any other bodies, but does anybody have anything from another body that they're representative to that they want to talk about? Okay, so future agenda items. I think this is kind of, given the discussion that we've had tonight, looking, and I know it's all in short order, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna do our best to support the manager's office and maybe move some other items around. I don't know if this one's forward.
Well, please, we need to wrap this up. Could you? And we're having trouble hearing here.
Okay, so let's look at July 6th. So, your new business, you know, the presentation to set the public hearing.
And that's, that's gonna be moved to July 20th.
That'll be moved to July 20th.
Okay.
Wait, what's being moved to July 20th?
Item A. Your new business is on July 6th, item A.
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, that's all right. Item B, review of proposed lease amendment for the Lebanon Opera House Improvement Corporation.
That's, that is hopefully going to be coming forward at that meeting. I'm waiting to hear back from the Opera House. This isn't something that you guys know about yet.
Okay.
But what it is, is they are looking to obtain a loan through a grant program to replace all of these curtains and do lighting and different work. And they've gotten approval for $80,000. But the institute that is giving them the funding or the loan won't do it because their lease is up before the term of the loan would end.
So, this needs to stay.
Yes.
This is time-sensitive. Understood?
Yes.
Okay, great. Review list of city-owned lands for potential disposition. Now, Councilor Barona brought this forward as an agenda item, which I completely support. What do you?
Absolutely. I think this is actually quite important.
Yeah, it mixes right in with this, so we can...
We've identified all these properties.
Do you think this is gonna be a big, you think we need to clear the July 6th agenda?
Well, I'm trying to triage the July 6th agenda to see if there's anything that...
And it's, I think it's more because of the work that I need to prep for.
Not to.
You know, for all the other items. Because the other thing that was going to come forward on July 6th was the establishment of criteria for funding human service agencies. Wow, for funding human, for funding social services.
Every year, a budget time, we have this discussion. We provide funds for our not-for-profit partners, but we don't have a specific criteria. There's an application that they fill, we discuss. And every year, we say, it would really be great for us to have a criteria by which to make these decisions. Because sometimes it gets competitive. It was the people we've always supported. We've talked about narrowing that list so that the ones we've already supported get more or do we expand the list? And without a criteria, it just feels a little loosey-goosey. So, that's been on the table. Can that potentially, I know it's timely, but maybe that moves off till August 3rd. I think that the work in the manager's office and the side discussion is gonna need to happen in terms of who's gonna be involved in this task force moving forward is a big chunk of the work.
Yeah, and the timing of it, I think it's important to move forward while we have the momentum.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that just understand that if, and I don't want to hang this out over anybody's head, and I agree, the timing of all this isn't gonna be optimal. But if we don't do it for July 6th, then we're not gonna be able to do it because budget instructions are going out. And I'm sorry, I didn't have enough time to devote to getting everything in order in the past couple of months. I had to really kind of prioritize stuff and I'm still working to prioritize. So, we wouldn't be able to provide that criteria in time to get the budget instructions out. So, it would be, it would be over for this year's discussion for criteria.
Are you close enough on the criteria that you feel you would be able to bring it to us in, on July 6th?
I, yeah, I've worked it...
So, that's ready enough that you think you could bring it forward to us?
Yes.
Because my sense is that this, I don't think creating the coalition is gonna be controversial.
The work outside of here is gonna be the majority of this. And that once the coalition is officially established, then there's gonna be work that comes or decisions that come back to the council or not, maybe questions of policy and further actions that need to be taken. I just want to make sure that we dedicate enough time. So, you think with the exception of, I mean, the first presentation, first reading usually not...
Right.
Yeah, and this proposed lease is time-sensitive. City-owned lands disposition, I have to agree that this is timely. If we're putting, you know, approving a task force and having the basic structure aligned for it, that shouldn't take up much time at the council table. Certainly, there could be more public discussion, but, so maybe July 6th just looks as it is?
Yeah, plus add, plus add hopefully the new task force's agenda item. Yeah, so...
So, it's actually, so it will be a busy night. The task force agenda item and the criteria for not-for-profits funding before the budget instructions go out. Okay?
Well, it'd be a lot of the same people maybe in the room.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If one of the quarterly board committee members, chairs cannot make the meeting on the 6th due to a problem, can he submit a full report that could be read into the minutes in some fashion if he can't physically be there?
Absolutely.
And what would be the deadline when you'd want that finished report?
So, the agenda will go, hold on.
It feels like we just had a quarterly report.
It does, yeah. Because we kind of just did.
And this room is suddenly, like, almost completely empty.
Except for Lynn. Thank you, Lynn.
And Sandy.
And Sandy. Thank you, Sandy.
So, I would need that report by June 27th.
June 27th.
Please.
Also, I don't know the protocol. That's great, thank you. I don't know the protocol of this, but I would like to offer my time and services to the acting city manager. I'm not able at this time for physical reasons to take up my part-time job. And I have all the time you need. I would like to help in any way I can. Just call me tomorrow, whatever you want.
Monday. I am taking the next two days off.
Here you go.
As a neighbor, I would tell family and town, what's the... So, give me a call or you, whenever you, I would do anything I can to help on this task force.
Do people feel comfortable that we have, we have a good direction for this? Okay, perfect. Karen, the task force forum, wait till you see it. Just write a little cover letter and stick it to it.
I was just gonna ask Cliff to fill it out.
Sorry?
I said, I was just gonna ask Cliff to do it. No.
I still have one to do myself that I am guilty of not even completing.
Will this be the first task force?
Yeah, I have to get the bridge one done to put this with me. Okay, let's make this the first one and the bridge one the second one.
Yeah.
The bridge naming.
The bridge naming.
Yeah, all right.
It doesn't seem quite as humanistic.
So, we've talked about future agenda items and, Councilor Barona, do you have a motion?
I move that we adjourn second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.